To order, roll call.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor D'Avila.
Present.
Councilmember Pilar Avalos. I'm sorry.
Maria del Pilar Avalos. It's the same person. Me, myself, and I.
Councilmember Barone.
Here.
And Councilmember Rios. City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas is on his way. And City Clerk Glaze is excused. Item number one. The City Council will issue a proclamation declaring October.
The meeting compensation.
Oh, I missed that.
That's okay. That's why I'm here.
Meeting compensation disclosure. Pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of the meetings.
Okay, open session, please. Item number one.
The City Council will issue a proclamation declaring October 23rd through 31st, 2024 as National Red Ribbon Week in the City of Southgate.
Thank you. So this proclamation is for National Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd through the 31st, 2024, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership in sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no use of legal. I'm sorry, no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st. And whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizen services organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy drug-free lifestyles by wearing the display of red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas adults must invest time, resources, and policy support in effective prevention and intervention strategies for youth. And teens must engage in driving crime from their communities. Whereas Southgate Community further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Campaign. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that on this eighth day of October, 2024, Mayor Gil Hurtado for the City of Southgate, on behalf of the City Council and citizens, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2024 as National Red Ribbon Week in the City of Southgate and encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Mayor Gil Hurtado.
Okay, and who's receiving this, Chief?
It'll be Sean Paulos, but I'd like to say a few words.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sean. For many years, we've been trying to do everything we can to educate the public on, you know, the drug epidemic. If it's not one thing, it's another. It's, you know, the gateway drug marijuana and cocaine over the years has progressed, methamphetamine. Now we're facing just a different crisis with the fentanyl that's coming in. So we do everything we can to educate our community, especially with the young students. For decades, we've been going to the schools during Red Ribbon Week. And at the collaborative meeting, I had some of the teachers that were thankful that we're still doing the programs. During the Red Ribbon Week, we're going to be going to the schools and coordinated by Sean and doing everything we can to connect law enforcement with the kids and educate them on the dangers of drugs so that they can make some healthy choices. Because sometimes these choices are, you know, life-changing decisions that they make in their young lives. So it's our goal to continue that, you know, that campaign to live healthy lives and encourage parents to get involved in their children's lives. I'll hand it over to Sean, who's been running the Red Ribbon Week for many years and doing a phenomenal job.
On behalf of the Southgate Police Department, we want to thank you all for this recognition. Red Ribbon Week began with the tragic loss of DEA Agent Enrique Gemenar, who was tortured and murdered by drug traffickers in 1985. Today, we continue to honor him by participating in community anti-drug events and pledging our lives to drug-free activities. Beginning October 23rd, officers will visit schools in the community and promote the values of drug-free, healthy lifestyles. We invite you all to wear red ribbons in October to show our intolerance to drug abuse. In addition, we've actually expanded our Red Ribbon Campaign to include middle schools this year and educate the parents to the signs and symptoms of drugs and alcohol and the effects on young bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And let me just add, you mentioned how people need to be educated, and I'm sure you were here during the time I know Maria was. But it's not just those things that people recognize as drugs, right, by name, but there's other things that parents really need to be aware. I don't know if you remember the incident where the little boy was standing on Firestone and Otis, and two young men had just purchased a canister of compressed air. And somehow, they figured out how to make that into, or use it, to give him like a 15 to 20-second high. They lost control of the vehicle, and they killed the little boy that was waiting. He had just gotten out of school, the middle school. Yeah, he was right there by the McDonald's. And the last words the mom heard were, "Mom, I'm hungry." And then the next thing the mom heard was a car hitting him. So again, parents need to be aware of those things that are known to be drugs, but also be aware of the other things that can be used as a drug. But in any case, let's go on.
You know, I would like to highlight, because it is written in the proclamation, no illegal use of legal drugs. And unfortunately, sometimes adults are prescribed high psychotropic medication that's accessible to our kids. And so sometimes they can ingest it by accident, or the adults take a little too much, then that causes them to lose their life or go into psychotic episodes. So I think, you know, it's important that we recognize not only the illegal ones, but the legal ones that can be misused.
Okay. Let's take that up here for him. Well, let's do it, because it's going, yeah. Okay, let's go to the next one. Yeah, it's easier. Item number two.
Item number two. The City Council will issue a proclamation declaring October 2024 as Crime Prevention Month.
Councilmember Barone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, Crime Prevention Month, October 2024. Whereas the vitality of the City of Southgate depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, workplace, and communities. And whereas crime and fear of crime destroy our trust in others and in institutions threatening the community's health, prosperity, and quality of life. And whereas people of all ages must be made aware of what they do to prevent themselves, their families, neighbors, coworkers from being harmed by drugs, violence, and other crimes. And whereas the personal injury, financial loss, community deterioration resulting from crime are intolerable and required investment from the whole community. And whereas crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security, but they must go beyond these to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and to develop positive education and recreational opportunities for young people. And where adults must invest time, resources, and policy support effective prevention and intervention strategies for youth and teens must be engaged in driving crime from their community. And whereas effective crime prevention programs excel because of the partnership among law enforcement, other governmental agencies, civic groups, schools, faith community, business, and individuals as a help to nature communal responsibilities and instill pride. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed on the eighth day of October, 2024, that I Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October, 2024 as Crime Prevention Month in Southgate and urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to invest in the power of preventing and work together to make Southgate a safer, stronger, and more caring community. Sign, Mayor Gil Hurtado.
Thank you. And who's receiving this one? Oh, him again. And Chief, did you want to add anything?
I did, just briefly. We're coming to the holiday season, and, you know, one of our biggest outreach efforts is educating the public. We can't fight crime alone, because crime is not exclusive to law enforcement. It's a community problem. We ask residents to safeguard their own properties, not be vulnerable, and become victims. Especially with the Christmas time coming up, we really engage in a campaign to encourage people to lock their cars. Don't leave valuables when you're shopping. It's just asking to be a target of a victim. But Sean's done a remarkable job putting together the Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch programs, meetings, and he'll be accepting the award for crime prevention.
Sean. Thank you, Chief and Council. Crime Prevention Month serves as a reminder that we can all make a difference in fighting crime. More and more residents are beginning to recognize that when it comes to preventing crime, neither law enforcement or the community can do the job alone. We must work together. Residents are working with local law enforcement to establish Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch programs in which citizens can remain vigilant against crime and report suspicious activity to the law enforcement. I am proud to announce today we have over 100 Neighborhood Watch captains and over 50 Business Watch partners. In observance with Crime Prevention Month, I encourage all residents to join a Neighborhood Watch group, attend a crime prevention event, and become more active in their neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, one of the things that I've looked at over the last few years, and I've had discussions with the Chief on this, is how over the last 10 years, that serious crime has come down significantly. And it's through programs like this and the efforts of our department. But sometimes stats are skewed. And one of the things that we discussed is how there's issues that the, like the riverbed, the homeless people, and they're, you know, they're involved in crime that results in the death of people. And those stats, because they happen to be on the riverbed that aligns with Southgate, end up as part of our stats. And my concern when things like that are posted on social media that the level of crime and murder is going up, it can cause some stress to people. So I hope at some point you can address that during a council meeting and kind of sort of show how those, you know, that Southgate is really a safe community. And I believe that it is. If it wasn't, I don't know that I'd want to be here with my wife and grandchildren and stuff. But I think our department does a fantastic job. And I just don't appreciate where the misinformation is out there. And I might even bring this up during the regular council meeting. Maybe you can touch on that a little bit. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but we have talked about this before.
Yeah, we do our very best to keep our finger on the pulse when it comes to crime. Property crimes have gone up in the last couple of years. Violent crimes have gone down, with the exception of, we've had just kind of an odd year last year with homicides the last couple of years. But we looked at those incidents, and they're not random victims. They seem to be very targeted. And a majority, or at least a good number of them, are germane to the riverbed or perhaps encampments. So we're keeping our eye on that. And but it's good, it's a good sign to see that violent crime is going down. We're working on the property crime. But again, that goes back to residences and businesses helping by safeguarding their property, ensuring that doors are locked, security cameras are placed, lighting is proper, because that really does help deter crime.
So try to keep all that memorized, because I'll probably ask you to bring it up during the regular meeting. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just also want to just point out that I think this also speaks volumes to what it means to be a good neighbor and to have a community that's built. You know, when you build that small group of friends and neighbors that are always looking out for each other, it also just makes you feel a lot safer. You know, joining a Neighborhood Watch is a way to make it official. And if you're interested, please reach out to Sean and to the Police Department to do that. But you don't need to have a Neighborhood Watch program. You can just be a good neighbor, and you can still be able to do that in your neighborhood. You know, we know the cars that are always there. We know the people that are walking their dogs quite often. And if we start to see a person that is not familiar or feel suspicious of something, please be vigilant. There are over 100,000 residents, and there's probably, there were under 80 to 90 officers in the whole city. We can be their eyes and their ears and just be an asset for them. And really, let's be good neighbors and be vigilant for our community as well. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item number three.
Item number three. The City Council will issue a proclamation declaring October, 2024 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yes.
I will read that proclamation. Proclamation, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas domestic violence awareness month was launched nationwide in October 1989 as a way to connect and unite individuals in organizing, working on domestic violence issues while raising awareness for those issues. And whereas over the past 35 years, much progress has been made to support domestic violence victims and survivors, to hold abusers accountable, and to create and update legislation to further those goals in. Whereas domestic violence is not a private family dispute that affects only the people involved. It is a violent criminal act that affects us all, regardless of gender, race, income, or age, in every community in this country. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole. Here in this community throughout the United States and the world, and whereas it is destroying, destroys families, relationships, and lives. More importantly, it tears at the moral fabric of who we are and undermines the very institution that has been the cornerstone for our country, which is family. And whereas the month of October should serve to initiate and an awareness campaign for the community and employees, emphasizing that the cycle of violence must and can be stopped and that there is help available to make this happen. And now, therefore, be proclaim on this day, on this eighth day of October, 2024, that I Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the City Council and citizens, to hereby proclaim the month of October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to become aware of the resources available. Join me disseminating this information to the community, family members, and friends. Sign, Mayor Gil Hurtado.
Okay. You mean it's not Sean this time?
Unless he wants to come up here.
No.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. It's an honor to be here again to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the victims and survivors of domestic violence. With this proclamation, you send the message that we will not tolerate violence in our homes and in our communities. The work we do can be sad and overwhelming and disheartening, but it can also be very rewarding to watch family members break the cycle of violence for future generations. So far, in 2024, our program has facilitated 72 support groups. We've placed 24 families in shelter, and we've assisted 27 families with restraining orders. We are committed to continue to do the work, and we thank you for your support and ongoing guidance. And I would want to take this time to also give a special thank you to our Chief Arakawa, our Captain Arana, Captain Perez, and Lieutenant Camacho for the trust that they instill or they have in me that allows me to do my job in the community. So thank you. And once again, thank you, City Councilmembers, Mayor, Vice Mayor, for your leadership and commitment to this important issue.
And thank you for what you do also. I, you saw me stepping away. I shared with the Chief that I received a phone call from a gentleman who wants to talk to somebody because he's been the victim of domestic violence at the hands of his wife, but doesn't know how, you know, this is going to look. You know, the wife hitting someone, you know, being violent. And that's more common than what people think. And sadly, a lot of times, they're afraid to also bring it out, for whatever reason it might be. But I'm glad that this has been addressed in that way, and you're making that point, that it's not just women, but it also.
Right.
Men.
It definitely is. And we definitely have services for men available. And there's also shelter services available for men. So if he feels comfortable, you can send them my way, and everything we do will be confidential.
I will speak to you shortly, and I will send the information over to you. That's okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to take this opportunity to, first of all, thank the police department, chief, captains, lieutenants, but especially Laura. You and Violeta have been doing such an amazing job with this program. Earlier, we were talking about, and thinking back, how long this program has been going on. It started with Yolanda almost 30 years ago. But as a full-time employee just dedicated to this program, it's been 17 years. And I know that you've been with us for 17 years, because that's how long, I mean, this program has been going on. But I just, again, I mean, seeing the families that have gone through the program has been very impactful for the family and the entire family. But it takes dedication and commitment, which you and Violeta have. And I just want to thank you for the great job that you've been doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Paulos, people. Let's go on to the closed session, audience.
Closed session. Item number one. Conference with legal counsel pending litigation, pursuant to government code section 54956.98, Ernest Mojaro versus City of Southgate et al. B, State of Carlos Manuel Hurtado versus City of Southgate et al. C, Oracle Block and Hardscape versus City of Southgate et al. Item number two. Conference with labor negotiator, pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency representation, Rob Houston, City Manager, employer organization, Southgate PMMA and Southgate MEA.
Any additional comments?
None.
Okay, let me open this up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on these items? Please step forward. See, no one close that portion? Any emails on this?
None, sir.
Okay, let me close that portion. It's going to close session. Okay, then we close that portion. It's going to close session.
From a meeting we just had in closed session. The regular meeting. Okay, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, it looks like we're back. Are you ready? Okay, please report out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I joined, the City Council went into closed session at 5:57 and the City Manager was kind enough to allow me to participate for much of that meeting by telephone while I drove into the city. In closed session, the city discussed three matters involving pending litigation. Item number one, Ernest Moharo versus City of Southgate involves an individual riding on a scooter who claims he suffered injury as a result of one of the city's streets at Atlantic and Tenaya on a motion that was made by Councilwoman Avalos and seconded by Vice Mayor Davila. And on a vote of five to zero, City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to defend that matter.
City Attorney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Would I not say Vice Mayor?
You combined them both.
So that's what happens when you fly in.
That's all right.
Let the record stand corrected. I apologize.
But it's okay.
Thank you. Thank you. My apologies, Vice Mayor. Yep. All right. Estate of Carlos Manuel Hurtado versus City of Southgate. This is another lawsuit involving an accident that actually occurred in the City of Downey, but the City of Southgate was named alongside the city. There was a motion made by Councilwoman Avalos and seconded by Vice Mayor Davila. And on a vote of five to zero, the City Council authorized the City Attorney to defend that matter. And item number one, C. Orco Block versus Hardscape, excuse me, Orco Block and Hardscape versus City of Southgate. This is a claim made by a subcontractor who worked for a contractor that did work for the City of Southgate. The subcontractor claims he was not fully paid and has named the contractor, the City of Southgate, and the contractor's insurer, surety. This matter was, there was a motion made by Councilmember Avalos, seconded by Vice Mayor Davila. On a vote of five to zero, the City Council authorized the matter to be referred to another law firm, which would be determined by the City Manager in that case. Item number two, conference with labor negotiator. The City Council met in closed session and had a discussion with the City Manager. The discussion focused on ongoing labor negotiations with two of the employee organizations, Southgate PMMA and the Southgate MEA. The City Council received a report and upon conclusion of that report, provided guidance to the City Manager, but there was no action or vote taken following that discussion. And that completes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, anybody in the audience wishing to address us on these items, welcome to come up to the mic. I see no one. I'm going to close the audience portion and of course, no emails, right? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'll let you. Okay, we have motion in a second. We are adjourned. Okay, say when you're ready.
Okay, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to make the announcement for the Spanish translation. Si hay alguien que necesita traducción en español, por favor, levante su mano para que se le dé un audífono. ¿Alguien necesita traducción en español? Sí, tenemos una persona. ¿Alguien más?
Steve, can you help him out with the mics?
Mantenga su mano por arriba, por favor, para que se lo den el audífono. Gracias. Just one.
It looks like two there.
Where? Just one.
Just one? Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and proceed. Roll call. Oh, no, invocation and then the pledge of allegiance pledge. The invocation is a lawful here. No. Okay, Steve, the invocation is you again. And then Angela Lucero will do the pledge of allegiance. So Steve, please stand there, everybody.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all that you do provide for us, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to provide wisdom to our council and all of our elected officials. We thank you, Lord, for their willingness to serve. Lord, we ask for your guidance for tonight's meeting and that you look after everything that is done. In your Son's holy and precious name, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nature under God and indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios. City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
And City Clerk Lays is excused. Meeting compensation?
Yes.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by City Council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, we have one item in public hearings. Can you read that into the record, please?
Item number one, following the conclusion of the public hearing, the City Council will consider adopting a resolution adopting the updated local hazard mitigation plan describing the city's efforts to prepare for and respond to emergencies.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, who's taking the lead here.
That'll, I'll pass it over to Chief Aracawa.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to call up Lieutenant Camacho, who's going to present the hazard mitigation plan and kind of give a Reader's Digest version of why we need this and the benefits to the city.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hurtado, esteemed members of the council. I come to you tonight not as Lieutenant Camacho, but as the City of Southgate's Emergency Services Manager. Part of what I am tasked with as the Emergency Services Manager is the oversight of not only our city's emergency operations plan and emergency operations center, but our local hazard mitigation plan. And very briefly, what that plan is, is it's a means to assist our city in safeguarding our community, lives, and property. The hazard mitigation plan is a roadmap, if you will, of things that we can do to try and mitigate the impacts of not only nature, but man-made catastrophe disasters. So as an example, flooding, extreme weather, drought, earthquakes, those are some of the things that we can't control, that Mother Nature definitely, you know, has the upper hand. But what we can do is through the assistance of Public Works, our code enforcement, our building and safety, our infrastructure projects, we can make sure that we have very stringent guidelines on how homes are built, how things are upgraded, our roads, our sewers, right down to our tree trimming. So when we have heavy rains, we minimize the amount of falling trees, falling branches, those types of things. And so this document stands alone and it provides us with a guideline in how we can minimize the impact of those things. What's unique to the hazard mitigation plan this year that we changed from a previous version was we included man-made, if you will, disasters and catastrophes, be that in recent times we've seen the level of damage caused by protests, political unrest, some of these things, also potential terrorist attacks. So those have now been included in the hazard mitigation plan. And I'd like to note of importance, this is not a boilerplate document. This document is specific to the City of Southgate. Just as an example, you'll notice that in this document, it doesn't address wildfires. Wildfires aren't a problem here like they may be, let's say, in another community, La Canyada, Flint Ridge, somewhere like that, somewhere in the foothills. So it is unique to us. It's something that the city is very familiar with. It's something that is required by law for us to keep and maintain, not only federal law, but state law as well. And one of the perks, if you will, of remaining in compliance is that it makes us eligible for state and federal funding that helps us to accomplish these goals. It also makes us eligible for grants from both the federal government and the state. I'm proud to announce that after about a nine-month process, working in partnership with Michael Baker International, who assisted us with its completion, it has been sent to Cal OES and to FEMA for initial review. It is in compliance. They're happy with the document. And so now it's just awaiting your review and signature so that we can adopt and ratify it. And so with that, answer any questions that I can, and if not, thank you very much for your consideration.
Well, do, let me first open it up to any member of the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to ask questions or make comments regarding this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'm going to close that portion. Do we have any emails on that?
None.
Okay, I do have a question because I know that I coach at the high school and a lot of times, you know, there, we don't have jurisdiction over the schools here in Southgate. They have their own policies. How do you collaborate with them to address, especially now that they've cut their funding on their school police? I've been on campus when we get locked down because there's somebody making a threat of some sort. So I'm just wondering how this works along with that, or is there any connection to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. While this document does not address those things directly, we do have mutual aid agreements in place. We do have our emergency operations plan, which is more of a blueprint for how our individual departments in the city will address these things as they're occurring and also address the aftermath. So in answer to your question, our mutual agreement, our mutual aid agreement with our neighboring law enforcement agencies, that's what dictates how we respond. And on a more boots-on-the-ground level, if you will, we have a very good working relationship with school police, especially in light of the cuts that they've taken and their downsizing. I think they've come to rely on us more now than they did previously. And we have always taken the stance, and I know the chief supports us on this, that we have never taken the approach of, well, that's a school problem.
Right.
Obviously, if they need help, we're going to be there for them, whether that's an active shooter or whether that's a child who gets in a fight on the way to or from school, has any type of issue. We are in constant communication with them. We have a very good working relationship with them. And we do have plans in place and we have trained with them previously. If we need to address a large-scale threat at any of our schools, we're prepared to do that, sir.
Thank you. And I've seen that in action, by the way, but I bring it up because I know that there have been some criticisms on some issues. And I try to explain to people that sometimes, you know, we have twenty-some-odd schools and there was a fight in front of Southgate High School. And, you know, people were complaining that why weren't the Southgate PD there? You know, how do you explain that we have twenty-some-odd schools, these things are going to happen? But we did respond. We took the proper course of action to look into, to investigate it. But some of these things are just not going to be able to stop before they get to that point. Thank you. Any other questions, anybody?
I just have a question.
Yes.
So you say you're part of the EOC, correct? How many staff do we have that are in that, in that specific unit? Again, we have the population of almost 100,000 residents. I'm just thinking, there's a major earthquake that's going to be coming down. Explosions are going off left and right because unfortunately, we still have a lot of our utilities through gas. Are we prepared for such a devastating event, or are we prepared enough, or could we do more?
Well, we can always be more prepared, ma'am, and that's why we train annually, several times a year, and we have meetings. Just one example, we have the Great Shakeout coming up in about a week and a half. And that's just one of the small things that we as a city do to prepare. But in answer to your question, everyone that you see before you is actually a member of our EOC team. Every department head and their second and third-in-command is a part of the team. If an event is large enough, essentially, by way of being a city employee, every employee bears some responsibility for coming in and addressing those matters. And that's something that they're all aware of when they get hired here. So in answer to your question, I wish we could spend all of our downtime, you know, doing nothing but training, kind of like the fire department does. But unfortunately, we don't have that luxury, but we are, we are prepared now.
No, but I think it's good that the community understands that you're not alone.
Thank you, ma'am.
You got company.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may ask, I know, you know, we have a lot of businesses that are in close proximity with a lot of residents in our community. How is the collaboration with our local businesses to identify if they're housing any hazardous waste that in the case of a disaster that we would need to act quickly and how do we mitigate those risks?
So the, to the extent that we can, sir, that not only through our code enforcement, but our building and safety, and then also through the county, some of those resources are available through the county. We at the police department don't proactively take steps to check businesses for those types of things. It's just not under our purview. But certainly, if we're made aware of something and it's something that we can't handle, but we are made aware of it, we can certainly reach out to code enforcement, the health department, the county, the fire department, and they can take a look into those things and take appropriate action.
And Mayor, I know that we have a lot of things that they would have to fill out when they're doing a site plan and all, you know, what type of materials are going to be housed there and how they're housing and what we require as a city. When we're having these conversations, are we bringing businesses in to have those conversations when it comes to disaster relief or mitigation of whenever there's something like this happening?
We don't have those kind of conversations when businesses come in. What I would recommend is actually having a separate effort for that, especially when we had that one last emergency calls that we had when we were going to have a huge storm. I think the best thing to do is actually partner with our local organizations, churches, and nonprofits to deal with emergencies like that. But initially, when businesses come in, it's actually not, we don't typically ask them, you know, if they're willing to partner with the city. What we do is we check them for zoning compliance and use. But there is another step that we can take, and that's informally, on a separate, you know, matter, ask them if they're willing to partner with us, with the city, in cases where we have emergencies. I think it's a huge benefit to the city, and that's actually been advised before from the department heads.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I was looking at the, the public engagement. Last year, you, you met with different organizations, city staff, nonprofits, neighborhoods, and utility public safety agencies. How, how does the SERP program come together with this, with this, this program?
Thank you for that question, ma'am. So SERP is not part of the hazard mitigation plan, if you will, but the SERP program, which, which I used to run previously, is actually a program, as you're aware, we have community members from not only Southgate, but we've actually hosted Cudahay and Lynwood residents. And it gives them a very And it gives them a very, kind of a 30,000-foot overview, and more so how to take care of themselves and their families. But in so doing, they take care of their neighbors, and they kind of alleviate the burden on us as first responders, law enforcement, fire, EMT. Because if they can triage minor injuries, and if they can be prepared in their own homes and their own neighborhoods, it lessens the impact on us having to respond to all these different places to try to, to render aid. There are some cities who have more involved SERP programs where they actually expect them to come out and volunteer if a disaster were to happen, and if their city staff was stretched thin. We don't take that step. I think that's a huge ask of our community. So what we do instead is try to prepare them as best we can to address any issues that may come up in their own households with their own families. And again, by doing that, they help us tremendously, because that's one less household or residence that we have to respond to, to render aid, because they're able to be self-sufficient until we can get through that first wave of 911 calls and all of the different chaos that's going on in a large-scale event like that. So that's usually how we ask them to help them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rios?
Thank you, Mayor. And going back, thank you, Lieutenant Camacho. I have two concerns in regards to this. One has to do with the schools. We have some 25, 26 schools in our city, and I know we have one police officer from LA Unified that patrols all the schools. So I, I don't, you know, I hate to think about Uvalde, Texas, but we know that that happened. And, you know, we just recently, we had one of our threats at one of our schools not too long ago. So I'm thinking in terms, if there's one officer from LA Unified, that means we're gonna get the call. I mean, we're gonna have to respond. So hopefully, we have a plan, you know, that, you know, active shooter, because that's becoming more and more of a reality throughout our country. So hopefully, we have a plan to respond to that kind of a situation. Unfortunately, we don't want it to happen, but we should, you know, at least be prepared, somewhat prepared. So that was one of my concerns. The other one has to do with, it's kind of a disaster. We have a chemical company, a prominent chemical company here, that brings in trainloads of chemicals and goes in and out of our community. And, and I know that, I've always been concerned about that, being at a terrorist location also for the way they keep chemicals out there in the yard and stuff. So also, if we could kind of have a plan for that, because, you know, there's a populated area, not too far from that location. So we should always, you know, just anticipate how will we respond to those situations. That's, that's all. And that, because that's your job, right, to kind of anticipate these things so that hopefully, it doesn't happen, but just be ready.
Councilmember, can I just add something? So when we're talking about the Hazard Mitigation Plan, this is a general plan that it's, you're pre-planning, you're, you're, you let the government know, Cal OES, FEMA know that you have a plan in place. What you're referring to is commonly what we have been doing the last year. In fact, the EOB, LASD EOB, and all the chiefs in LA County have been working, especially in light of October 7th, which was happened Monday. We had a pre-plan that we've discussed with the sheriff on a Zoom call last week. At the end of the month, we're gonna have EOB come down and discuss the plan for the elections at the end of the month. So we're doing, you don't hear about this, but there's a lot of planning going on, more so than ever before in years past. So I'm coordinating a lot of that discussion with the LA County Chiefs, our neighboring agencies. We've been on board with the California Highway Patrol, LAPD, LA sheriffs. We have a really good understanding about how we're gonna respond. Fortunately for us, we're not as affected as some of the other areas in West LA, Beverly Hills, Culver City, where they have a lot more activity. But I assure you that we've been very active with our communication with our local, state and federal partners on what, exactly what you're talking about. We are prepared. And I think this Hazard Mitigation Plan that Lieutenant has helped put together has just been, just really kind of wraps everything around, and I feel very comfortable that we're, we're ready for any disaster or unrest.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
And Mayor Hurtado?
Yes.
Motion, passes.
Okay, we are now to the comments from the audience. Read that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will open this up to the audience. Anybody wishes to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda, please step forward. A couple of reminders, you get three minutes, or you can come on up. I'll finish by the time you get here. You get three minutes. This, since they're not on the agenda, we are not permitted to respond to you. Staff will make notifications, and if possible, they'll say a thing or two, but for the most part, we can't get into a back and forth. So if you don't mind, is that okay? He goes first, and then just go get in line. Help him with the mic, please.
My name is Ignacio Cano. I live in the city of Southgate, the 4102 of La Santana. I've been asking for tree trimming. I've come here in person, and I've been asking for this already, and they sent me away to another department, and nobody, and they give me a phone number that I've been calling, and no one's responding. I've come here in person, and I've been asking for this already, and they sent me over to what I think is right by the railroad tracks, and there was a gentleman there that was talking to me. He said that he would meet me at 7:00 AM in the morning. But he never arrived. My question is, who's gonna end up fixing my house when this tree falls on top of my house? It's very close to falling. And it's been very, many times that I've been coming, many times, and all I get is lies, and no one shows up to help me. I wanna know who's gonna fix my home when the tree falls on top of my house. Again, my address is 4102 Santana. On the sidewalk, there's also a tree that is uplifting the roots. The cement is lifted, and I see people falling. And they tell me that they're gonna fix that, and they also don't. And I wanna know, are you gonna keep lying to me, or what do I have to do so that you hear me?
Arturo, can you make sure you give him your card? Actually, take his information down if possible, so that we can make sure that we do reach out to him.
He's saying that he'll take his information, and he's the director of public works, and he'll keep track of his concern. It's three trees. There's one on Santana, and one on San Vicente. But I see that they don't pay attention to it, because they're from the city. And I just see that I'm not being heard.
And Art, once you get his information, you can give us an update after you've addressed it. Okay, let us know what's going on.
He's saying that he'll give his information, and he'll keep track, and he'll bring a summary of what's happening with you. Okay? What information do you need? To the right, the captain that's there, you can give his information.
Muchas gracias. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. Is the, is the mic on? Is green?
Hello, Council.
Oh, there you go.
Here you go. My name's Jennifer Daly. I'm an environmental activist concerned by the illegal truck yards doing business in Southgate. I'm a fourth-generation Angelino. I was born in Montebello. My family's from Pico Rivera, that's where I grew up. And my uncle was a corporate truck driver all over southeast LA for his entire life. So I became pretty familiar with the harmful impact that these truck companies can have on the community when they go unchecked. Currently, there are four illegal truck yards operating in Southgate. For example, the truck yard at 8530 Alameda is operating under what we call a TUP, a Temporary Use Permit. It was issued in 2020 and expired on July 16th, 2021. The city maintains that the permit was issued in error. Since July 2021, the trucks have been operating without a TUP and without a conditional use permit either. The city's position is that the TUP is allowed to be in effect for three days in a row or 10 working days in any calendar year. This unpermitted yard has been operating continuously since July 16th, 2021, without a permit at all. The four illegal truck yards we're referring to are at 4552 Ardean Street, 8530 South Alameda, 5211 Southern Avenue, 56, or sorry, 5767 Imperial Highway. I've spoken to Southgate residents who are dealing with the daily challenges caused by these illegal truck yards. Things like pollution, dangerous roadblocks, deadly collisions, specifically two residents killed in a collision with the big rig in 2021, traffic, no parking, and the disregard and trashing of residential areas. These residents, I have some friends here that have done this, have collected hundreds of signatures to shut down the illegal truck yards, but the city has ignored them, and the trucks are running rampant through the neighborhoods. Why is this? What is a temporary use permit? The Alameda truck yard is still running, so these permits appear to be completely meaningless. Are they legally allowed to operate permanently? This leads me to another question. Are there backroom deals being made here that are granting the truck companies legal immunity? Who does the council represent, the special interests, or the people here? Because no action has been taken by the city, we have no other choice but to bring these serious concerns to the press and to other activist groups in protest. Thank you for your time and consideration in addressing the concerns of your constituents. We look forward to your action on this issue.
Thank you. And Mayor, if you can get the information from her again, and also give us a follow-up on that. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I am a parent of AYSO soccer team. We practice at Hollendale Park. I have had both of my children there for two years now, and during the fall, there's no light. So the city provided lights to one side of the park with the agreement that they will allow the football, the football team, to practice there. Here's the issue with that. The lights, one, only get turned on when the football team is practicing. Two, they're not practicing on turf, which is damaging the grass. So if the agreement was to have the lights there, and it's not beneficial to us at all, then why have them there? It just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense because the agreement was to allow them, although they actually had three other schools, high schools, that provided access to them, but they didn't want to take that access because they weren't going to be allowed to sell their snacks there. So they had choices. So if the lights are not going to be turned on when we need them, we have 47 teams. Each team has about eight to 11 kits. And this, we have practice Monday through Thursdays, we have games on Fridays, and we have games on Saturdays, sometimes even Sundays. So explain to me how that makes sense, that you're gonna have an agreement, yet not turn on the lights for us, when it's our turn to practice? And mind you, we're talking about 47 teams that we have. Half of the field is for them, and the other half, where 47 teams are supposed to practice? That makes no sense. There's the other part of the park that has no lighting whatsoever. I myself have bought lights. But technically, you're not supposed to have lights there, because we have told, been told by the sheriffs that you're not supposed to put up lights. So what is it for us to do? What's next? Because if those lights are not gonna be turned on for our children, then you can take them back. There's no need for us to have them, and that team can go play somewhere else. They can go practice somewhere else, because they're just messing up the turf, and we're not benefiting from it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Council. My name's Nicole Kim. I'm also a parent participating in the AYSO program. While it is a very wonderful program, it has been very quite disappointing to see the Hollendale Regional Park not have any lights. I myself have lived in many different cities all over LA County, and I've never experienced a park, a sports park at that, where it lacked lights. So it's been very disappointing. My, my son is four years old, and it's quite dangerous for him to be playing, you know, without any light present. Our practice runs from Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:30 to 7:30, and from that time, the sun just quite sets really quickly. We just implore you to please do something about the lights. We have reviewed the master plan. It looks like that you guys have available online. The master plan covers for the 20 years, I believe, something was passed sometime around 2008. All the plans look really, really, you know, legitimate, very nice plans that you guys have. It's just, when is it timed for you guys to please implement? As you can see, our soccer, you know, program is very popular within the city, and all the kids are just having so much fun. But we please ask for our safety, because we also do have a lot of transients and a lot of homeless individuals that do cross over from the riverbed. As you know, our park is right next to the riverbed adjacent to that. So we do get a lot of, you know, dangerous, I mean, I'm sorry to say, quite dangerous individuals that, you know, come across after sunset. And we really, you know, would like to, you know, have some safety for our kids. Please, we ask that you, you know, put something in place, at least some temporary lights for this season, and we hope that, you know, some type of permanent lighting can be done, you know, from here on out. I know you have a few more years left until the master plan is finished. Please, if you complete, you know, do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
You can raise that up.
My name is Jose L. Garcia. I'm from the city of Hollendale, and my kid also plays for AYSO. And I've been living in Hollendale for 50 years. I grew up there, and I've noticed that my child, as he practices there like twice a week, is very dangerous, because a lot of people are jumping over the riverbed. And I never once, in the 50 years, I don't even, I don't see no police officers there ever. I have ring on my house. I think in the last three months, I only see one police officer pass by there. Like, Southgate police officers don't go to that track of Hollendale. And there's a lot of transits coming, those little border bikes that they're driving, and they're taking the freeway from Bell Gardens all the way, not the freeway, the riverbed, and those little bikes, like gangs of them, because there's like six or seven bikes, and it happens every weekend. And they jump over the fence, and they go to Hollendale area where the kids are at. And last night, I was there waiting for my child to come out, and, and they're jumping over the fence, and they're yelling out stuff, running around, like going crazy. It's scary for the kids, because it's dark. I mean, I'm looking there with my son, but some, there are some children that are playing in the playground by themselves, and I think it's dangerous. I'd like to see not only more lighting, but maybe some police officers drive by at least, like once in a while, because it's quiet, I never see nobody there. And my child also goes to school in Hollendale, and I never see officers. And the same thing, transits jumping over the fence right by the school, and the kids walking home by themselves, and these guys are just wandering around, looking, I don't know what they're looking for, but they're looking for something, and it's dangerous. And I've heard that some, some have yelled stuff at the little kids walking home. So I'd just like to see more police presence in the area if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Maria Cortez, and I am the Regional Commissioner from Southgate AYSO. And I am also here for the lighting issue. I know it's doable now that we see that we got the football team there as well. And I am greatly apprised. And I am greatly appreciated on what Steve did, you know, bringing on the lights, but we do need lighting over on the other side. You know, we do have videos where, you know, you can see parents, coaches and the kids practicing at night and there's no lighting. So we have people that are construction workers, so they bring their generators and some sort of light so they can end practice, you know, at least they can get their practices in. And like they said, I'm sorry, but I know we're supposed to share fields, but the football team, in the three weeks that they've been there, our fields are getting damaged. And I have certified refs that have come to me and said that it's unbelievable on how the, the field has gotten really bad. So, you know, it's a lighting issue. And then again, I'm sorry, the football teams just, they leave a lot of trash as well. Their disposable mouth guards, they're always on the floor. And, you know, we try to keep it clean, but there's nothing from them, you know? So we would really appreciate if somebody can look into this matter and, you know, try to get us some more lights. AYSO doesn't ask for anything much. We don't ask for any funding from you guys. You know, we don't go and ask, you know, we want this, you know, free for us. No. So if any, you know, if we, we can have that done for us, that would be really great. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, audience portion is over. I'm kidding, go ahead, Anna.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Anna Lizarreras and I'm the Director of the Southgate Chamber of Commerce. And I want to extend to you all an invitation. I know a lot of holidays are just around the corner, but we're starting the planning of our Christmas Lane Parade. Never too early to start. I do want to share that the location has been moved. It's no longer going to be on Tweedy Boulevard due to the improvements that are being made now. So it will be along Southern Avenue and it will begin on California, heading east all the way to Pinehurst. It will end along with the festival at Fields 9 and 10. And basically the same format that we've had for the past 76 years. This is our 77th annual and I want to extend the invitation to you, to you all, organizations, community members, business owners, come and feature your business on our parade, okay? So thank you all. And December 8th is a Sunday, the second Sunday of December, and it starts at noon. Looking forward to seeing you.
Before you step away, Anna, so since there's a change of location, I think there's got a, there's an opportunity to reach out to the residents that are going to be impacted and letting them know this is where the parade's going to be. That way, you know, they don't wake up one morning, there's the parade being right.
Absolutely. Thank you for that recommendation. And we are going to be doing the door hangers individually to all of Southern and a few houses into each street that is going to be impacted. The fun part about it is the parade is coming to them now, right? So they don't have to go to the parade. So we'll try and, and make the best of it.
Can we just make sure that when we are doing the outreach, we look at both sides of Southern, not just on one side? Because Southern runs in between Firestone and Southern and Tweedy and Southern, just to keep those residents in the know because they are.
Thank you. We appreciate those recommendations. It's being published in the magazine for the city, social media. We're going to be doing mailers and mainly on those, that area that is going to be impacted.
I'll reach out to you later and give you some businesses that have approached me that said, hey, we want to be part of it. Who do we talk to? I referred them to you, but I don't know if they've called you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just, if it's going to be on, so it's going to be a narrower street, the parade's going to be longer. You have plans for all that because, you know.
So it's the same 1.4 miles, starts on California, the same format, starts on California and ends on, right at that curve. It's still Southern Avenue, but Pinehurst, Pinehurst.
Right, but it's narrower. The street's narrower than Tweedy.
It is a bit narrower and we have the walkway along the north side of Southern. So we're working with Public Works, with Parks and Rec, with all the recommendations to keep and maintain this event a safe event.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello, Armando Velazquez, Independence Avenue, 65 Padres, top of the fifth. You're welcome. And I'm here to mainly give a report on our new year for the Southgate Kiwanis Club. As some of you may know, Kiwanis International, all worldwide, begins its new year on October 1st. And our club is proud to have Hemavega as our new president. I'm sure many of you have met her throughout all our four years as a, as a club. She is the heart of our club and so we're looking forward to everything that she has in store for us. We do have some public invitations to the community of projects that are coming up here in the month of October. We have two bingo lotería nights in the upcoming two Wednesdays, October the 16th, at the Southgate Senior Villas Complex and October 23rd at the Greenfield Care Center right here on State Street. Both are from 5 to 7. They always enjoy all the guests that come about and play bingo and lotería with them. They mainly want time with individuals too. So that's what really the project is about. We have our monthly Kiwanis cleanup scheduled for Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30. It will be at Southgate High School at the Dearborn side. Southgate High School at the Dearborn side and it goes for about an hour and a half. Our Monterra K Kids, that is our elementary school youth program, is in the middle or is actually going to be concluding their clothes and costume drive, which concludes tomorrow. They are accepting donations for gently used clothing for youth kids in elementary schools and any costumes that maybe they're not using anymore. They can be donated up until tomorrow. At Monterra Avenue Elementary, you can ask for Ms. Figueroa, Ms. Valdez, and Mrs. Alvarez. Last but not least, we're proud to announce that our club has taken new steps to charter the first ever middle school program here in the city of Southgate, which has never, it's never happened before. So we're proud to be the sponsors of the Builders Club at Keep Corazon Upper Level, which is a school focused on students between the ages of five and, of fifth and eighth grade. And for those of you who work with middle school, you probably know that middle school is probably the most difficult years, not high school, not elementary school, middle school. So we're looking forward to building further programs in the middle school area. That's all I have to report. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Armando. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. Do we have any emails?
Two, sir.
Thank you.
The first one, seems the school and parents have requested a pedestrian buying a Long Beach and Orchard Place for a very long time and our voices are not being heard. What would it be, what would be the next step? Do we need to get signatures for this position, for this petition, excuse me, respectively, Veronica? And the next one says, hello, council members. I am concerned resident and parent of Southgate requesting that the Hollidale Community Park renovation project be carried out as soon as possible and request confirm that the new planned lighting will also serve soccer fields and not just pedestrian pathways and common areas. We have a very large AYSO, AYSO, community that is in dire need of lighting for afternoon practices, not being able to leverage the park during daylight savings time in the evening, handicaps, and already undeserved community. Regards, Eric Trujillo. That's it, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close that, the audience portion. Okay, so as we go around the room, if any other comments that were made by the community members can be addressed, please do so. Arturo Cervantes, you're up first.
Yes, I'll start off by addressing the comments. So you heard the gentleman earlier with his request for tree maintenance and sidewalk repairs. So I'll certainly look into that with regards to the request for a crosswalk on Long Beach and Orchard, and Orchard. We've just completed a project there where we had, we designed it based on recommendations and community needs and what was, we took safety into account. I'm still looking at that intersection anyway to see if it's advisable to place a crosswalk along Orchard across a very wide roadway without any protections. Adding traffic signal, more traffic signals on Long Beach is a challenge in those areas. So we're, we're taking a look at it, but it would be a very, it just, it just needs to be looked at in detail. I also want to provide a quick update on the CAP. If the CAP presentation can please be put up, I would appreciate that. I have a very short presentation for you today. I want to start off by first providing an update on the, on the municipal park projects. As I've mentioned before, we've got Circle Park and Hollidale Community Park under construction, but I did want to announce that we now have approval from the County of LA to move forward on the urban Orchard project. That was slightly more than a 20-month effort to get to this approval point. The project was out to bid some time ago, so we opened bids this Thursday and we're hoping to start construction as early as November with an estimated timeframe of either four months or five months, depending what council selects. So I want to thank the council for their patience as well as the community as we're moving this project forward. Next slide. To provide a quick update on the Tweedy Mall Complete Streets project, the project is moving fast. We're currently working on the south side of Tweedy Boulevard, continuing to do work on ramps, curbs, or the curb ramps, sidewalks, and the parklets, which are the areas that are going to be widened within mid-block. Here, we've got contractors on the left and then we've, we've got a volunteer inspector on the right, our very own city manager, making sure that the project is running on schedule and that construction quality is being adhered to. Next slide, please. And then just finally, I want to mention that this is the, a reflection of some of the highlighted projects for our current capital improvement program. I just want to mention that tonight you will have an opportunity to consider adding another project to the list and that would be a project on State Street along the entire city limits to consider making improvements tonight. So we can address that project later tonight if questions come up. But tonight, you will be asked to appropriate some funding for it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple updates from the Parks and Recreation Department. First of all, this Saturday is our annual art walk over at front of City Hall from the art museum all the way down to the police department. Like the past couple of years, it's become a very popular event in the city and we expect again to get a large crowd. It'll start at 2 o'clock on Saturday. There will be limited parking in the area, so please come early and come and enjoy it. As for some of the questions that were brought up today, AYSO has been part of the Parks and Recreation Department with us as a partner organization for the last 36 years. We have not had lights at Hollidale Regional Park in all that time. As one of the persons mentioned, there is a master plan online for it and we did do that a couple of years back and asked the resident what the priorities and what we could look at. At that time in 2019, I think it was, the overall cost to complete that master plan was $54 million. I don't think we have that at this time yet. And obviously, after five more years, that plan's probably gone up a number of times. We did, at the time, we tried to work with both our AYSO, as Maria noted, and our football program to provide some temporary lights on the, over in that area, just to see if we could do some proper football and soccer play over there. These are lights that no one has ever had before. So in the 36 years AYSO has been there, they've never had lights at Hollidale. So this was extra practice time at that point. Today was the first time we had gotten any request for a Monday night set of lights. Got that from the city manager, but the group has not approached us about it. And they are correct. It is a dawn to dusk park. And so unless it's special permit, which is the timeframe we have for the lights on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, it is not open at night. We are going to open them for Mondays, starting this week if we have staff. We're working on that right now, but we will be doing that and hopefully adjusting some of the lights possibly with that. But, you know, this is a problem and we were trying to help and.
Steve, thank you. I'll just tag on to that. Yes, I think there's always an attempt to help as many groups as we can with the limited resources we have. And this is an example of, you know, trying to find that sweet balance. It's tough. And in this case, I think, you know, we're still trying to find out. The idea was to have a pilot program, not a permanent program, to see if there's a way. The football program had traditionally been at the high school where they could have lit evening practices. That was not a permit, they weren't allowed to use that this year. So there was this last minute scramble. We understood there wasn't another place for them to go. The program might fall apart completely. So in an attempt to help that group, there was an idea to temporarily try putting some lights there for their evening practices. And there was discussion with AYSO, but understandably, it's new. It's creating some conflicts, trying to put a lot of things in a small space. And so we will look back. I've talked to Steve about adding lights on Monday, which requires our staffing and extra costs, but we, we're trying to get that sweet spot. Again, after this pilot project, if we find that it's not compatible, we'll revisit it. But at this point, we've talked about committing to adding Monday for the soccer groups and we've also received some feedback on the placement of the lights. And we'll see if we can tweak them at all. There are limits. The light stands cannot go within a certain distance of the overhead power lines, so they may not be perfectly positioned, but we'll keep working with the teams, talking with everyone, trying to find a good balance. But in, sometimes no good deed goes unpunished, so we're trying our best and we want to keep communicating with AYSO football team. But if where possible, please reach out to Steve or Tina or anyone in the rec team so that they can work on this together. Thank you.
Meredith?
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I will be following up with Ms. Daly regarding the four addresses that she just mentioned regarding illegal trucking. I've already emailed her tonight regarding my information so that she can also get in touch with me. Other than that, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
And if you can send us information on that because we need to be aware of what's going on as well.
I will. Thank you.
Somebody's operating, and there shouldn't be. We need to know about that, okay? All right. Wendy?
Good evening, Mayor. Nothing to report from the Administrative Services.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As always, if anybody's looking for a job, go to cityofsouthgate.org and click on the jobs tab. And right now, we have our Parks and Rec, our Public Works and Police Department that are hiring. Parks and Rec is looking for a lifeguard. They're looking for a community service officer, a part-time park ranger, and they're also looking for a groundskeeper, rec leader, too. In our, in the police department, we have a position for an intermediate account clerk. We have kind of a variety of positions over in the PD. We're also looking for a police administrative assistant, full-time. Now, the, the account clerk closes next week on the 18th, so. And then the police analyst position closes also next week on the 18th. So get those applications in. We're also looking for police dispatchers and that one closes next week on the 20th. And police officers, as always, a $15,000 hiring bonus for new police officers and for laterals that come on over $20,000. And finally, in our Public Works Department, we're looking for a full-time journey electrician. We're also looking for a Public Works Senior Management Analyst in Engineering and the Water Customer Service Supervisor, a full-time position as well. So again, cityofsouthgate.org and click on the jobs tab and apply.
Chief? Mayor and Council, last week I sent you an email regarding a letter that we received from the FBI. So I just wanted to talk about it. That letter is actually signed by the Director of the FBI, which is a very rare occasion. That's the presidential appointee that recognized very few investigations, but this case that was worked was started in the FBI Los Angeles Field Office. And our narcotics team was very instrumental in investigating this trucking company out of Mexico who was transporting narcotics into the United States. The seizures, I mean, hundreds of hours of surveillance resulted in the seizure of 362,000 fentanyl pills, which is essentially 362 possible lethal doses of fentanyl pills, 35 pounds of heroin, 10 and a half pounds of fentanyl powder, and then an additional 10,000-plus methamphetamine pills. That's not a small catch. That's a significant seizure over a number of different incidents where they were smuggling it in various means. Just goes to show you the commitment that we have in Southgate to impact the larger
that we have in South Gate to impact the larger drug trafficking that's coming into the United States. I really believe that we're saving lives. I mean, one of the seizures alone just potentially saving lives. Those drugs end up in our communities in the southeast, so I applaud the narcotics team. When you see them, please thank them for their hard work.
I had asked you to kind of sort of remember what you said earlier at the prior meeting. Can you touch on that as well, the trends, just real briefly, the crime?
Yes. Just, I mean, I don't have the stats in front of me. Violent crimes are trending down. Property crimes are going up. Would ask that residents safeguard their property, lock their doors, use security cameras, and help us help you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Nothing further to report.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got back from a trip to Kansas City. I was attending a conference of the US Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. They have an annual event where they invite Hispanic business enterprises from all over the country to attend, and we have a strong contingent of entrepreneurs that are located in California. There's always a report that is given, and briefly, I just wanted to say that the Hispanic market is the fastest-growing market. If you take a look at the gross domestic product, which is a measure by which economies are judged by, the entire Hispanic market in the United States would place us ahead of Canada and Germany, and it's growing faster than India and China. And so it's a tremendous amount of work. The total gross domestic product comes in at about $3.6 trillion, and it really... And Latinas are leading the way, which is not surprising in terms of that. So I think it bodes well for communities like South Gate that have, I think, a thriving opportunity, particularly with colleges here, to enter into the entrepreneurial spirit. I just want to share that with you.
Okay. Thank you. City Treasurer?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we have two clerks here today. Both of them are speaking, right?
Nothing to report, sir.
You have to talk. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Ortado. So I have a couple of things. Definitely, I want to tell the parents of AYSO, thank you for coming out. I did have an opportunity to be with you out there yesterday, and yes, it is extremely, extremely unsafe and very dark. I have a video, which I would like to share with you later. Steve, because I think it's important that we understand that we are fair and equitable with all of our nonprofits. I understand there wasn't lights before. There's lights now, and we got to make sure we keep them on for our little ones, because they are more susceptible to injury. So hopefully, looking at our budgets moving forward, maybe there's something we can do. I definitely want to congratulate Gemma. I know she reached out to me, but unfortunately, I was out doing other stuff. But thank you, and I congratulate her on being now the President of the South Gate Kiwanis. Anna, thank you so much for coming out and letting us know of the new route for the South Gate Parade. I know a lot of the businesses on Tweedy have been inquiring a lot now that I've been walking my community, so most of them do want to get more involved and want to partake in our parade. Even though it might not be on Tweedy, they want to be a part of it. And I think this is the most appropriate time for me to address some false allegations that have been circling out in the community. I want to take a moment to address some of the serious concerns regarding false allegations that have been spread by certain elected officials and some staff members about me. It is important to clarify these points today. At no time did I ever submit an invoice to the City of South Gate in an amount of $10,000 worth of furniture. But Wendy, hopefully you can look into this and give me receipts, because I think the facts and the evidence sometimes speaks more than words. This claim is simply untrue. In standard business practice, it is common to request three bids for any purchases made. I did submit a bid, but it was too high, so I decided to withdraw the bid once it was presented to me. This action does not imply that there was ever an invoice or any attempt to charge the city for furniture. I would like to see the invoices that were supposedly submitted to the city that would prove that I ever attempted to invoice the city for these expenses. I also need to clarify meeting expenses. My second point, I do attend meetings, and yes, I do have a tendency to stay in hotels from time to time. However, I want to make it clear that I paid for those hotel stays with my own money. I find it perplexing as to why anybody would feel entitled to question where I choose to stay or how I choose to pay for my accommodations. Now, my elected officials very well know when we go to conferences, we are not responsible for those accommodations. It is the organizing committee that tells us where we can stay. Being an elected official does not mean that I automatically build a city or any personal choices, such as spending the night at a hotel or enjoying a meal. Unfortunately, I think some of my colleagues may seem to be making these assumptions that I build a city. I just want to clarify that that is not the case, and if that were the case, please produce the evidence. I would also like to see any bills that support these supposed allegations. Commitment to transparency and ethics. I am a candidate who firmly believes in the practice of transparency, accountability, and ethics. The reason I am addressing these issues today is that I want to make clear and transparent with the public. It is essential to put these rumors to rest so that we can conduct an ethical and honest election. I believe that voters deserve to know the truth, and I am committed to ensure that these elections and my actions reflect that of being ethical. Discussion on mental health and the support. Many individuals are making claims on their campaign materials that they support mental health initiatives. However, I think it is critical to have an open discussion about what that really means. While this may be... This may not be an appropriate time or place for an in-depth discussion. I am more than willing to engage in a debate or a community forum on this specific topic. It is vital that the community understand that there is often differences between what people say and the actual truth. I encourage anyone to reach out to me, whether it's positive feedback or negative feedback, or somewhere in between. I am committed to clarifying any misunderstandings on the record, just as I'm doing today. Encouragement of open dialogue. I have nothing to fear in this situation. I recognize that many people, from their opinions based on rumors and hearsay. However, I would like to believe that my track record speaks for itself. For those who have witnessed my support and dedication firsthand, I hope you will stand by me and not be swayed to false allegations. It is essential to focus on the facts and not let misinformation cloud our judgment. In conclusion, I urge everyone to seek the truth and engage in open dialogue. It is critical for our community to come together and discuss these issues honestly. I am here to answer any questions and provide clarity on any concerns that you may have. Let us work together to ensure that our election process remains fair and transparent. I appreciate your attention to these matters, and I look forward to continuing this conversation with all of you. Thank you. And with that, I want to make clear, in the spirit of protecting our First Amendment rights, in the last council meeting, we received a letter, all of us did, and it was not written to the record. So I would like to take this opportunity to read it into the record since it was denied at the last council meeting. May I? Thank you. I would like to take the opportunity to address the deeply shocking and completely unacceptable display of favoritism that has been exhibited by our city clerk during this election cycle. It has come to the attention of many concerned voters that she has been openly endorsing a specific group of candidates. This behavior raises serious concerns about the fairness and integrity of the electoral process that we all rely on. The integrity of this election is undeniably at stake, and it is critical that we address these issues head-on. The writer says, "I am a 40-year-old. I have been living in the city for 40 years, and I have never witnessed a city clerk posting a backdrop of candidates on her social media page," where she clearly states that she is the city clerk and is actively coercing voters to cast their ballots in a certain direction. This is particular instance, the focus seems to be on our mayor and vice mayor, which leads many to believe that they may be utilizing their authority to influence the election process, and this is not going unnoticed by the public. The role of the city clerk should be one of objectivity and dedication, focused solely on ensuring the integrity and fairness of the election process for all candidates involved, regardless of their political affiliation. Instead, her actions suggest a clear bias as she effectively lobbying for certain individuals throughout the community. This constituted blatant violation of the ethical standards that are meant to guide public officials in their duties, such as behavior cannot be overlooked and should be reported to the appropriate government ethics commissions to ensure accountability and uphold the principles of fair elections that we all cherish. In fact, that no one in this administration is even bothering to correct such actions is a disgrace. It raises a question. Do we have a city attorney who can advise this person on the potential legal ramifications of this situation could place on our city? How can we trust an individual who engages in such questionable practices? I would like to know what training or qualifications and basic ethics and civil procedures she holds, as it seems that there is a significant gap in understanding these responsibilities that come with her position. In conclusion, it is imperative that we take a stand against this kind of behavior. We must demand transparency and accountability from our public officials to ensure that our electoral process remains fair and just for everyone involved. The integrity of our election is too important to be compromised by favoritism or biases. We deserve better, and it is at this time that for us to hold those in power accountable for their actions. This also applies to our city treasurer. So I just want to make sure that the community understands that when we get letters, they should be read, and we need to protect that First Amendment right. Whether you send an email, whether you put it in the mail, they need to be read into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Barron?
First off, I'd like to go ahead and thank all the residents that are here. It's great to have people in the chambers, and, you know, thank you for making your voices heard. Thank you for telling us your thoughts on issues in our community. And believe me, as a father with kids that went through the AYSO program, I hear you. I see you. There is a lot that we want to get done there. That master plan is something that I was very proud of when we were working together to finalize it, as I was a Parks and Rec Commissioner at the time, and it makes my dream... It would be my dream to make Hollidale Park a soccer mecca in the southeast Los Angeles region, because I think that's where it really deserves to be. But thank you again for being here, and just know that you are being heard, and thank you. So I want to just go over a few things on... I actually had some questions regarding the Tweedy Mile Art. I had a lot of residents come up to me telling me, "The sidewalks weren't bad. The streets are really bad. Why aren't you doing the streets, and why are you doing the sidewalks?" I tried my best to explain it. I tell them I'm not an engineer, but I know there's a reason why we have to start on the sidewalks first before we do the streets. If you can give some insight on that?
Yeah. Firstly, we leave it as a... Well, firstly, the scope of the project includes sidewalk work as well as roadway work and what have you, and there's a general sequence in the industry for constructing these major projects, and it usually starts from the concrete improvement. They focus on concrete, because during that time, you're doing things like cutting into the asphalt concrete. So if you do asphalt concrete first, you'd have to cut that to be able to do concrete. So the contractors start with sidewalk work first, or what we call concrete work. They then go into the street. Once any utilities are in place or anything or what have you, but the asphalt concrete, as you've seen on Long Beach Boulevard and Firestone, is almost the absolute last thing that you do. Once everything is done, it's usually a two- or three-day job. It moves pretty fast, and then the striping comes in, but it's just the preferred industry approach to constructing roadway, so that's the reason.
Thank you. Then moving on to the Christmas Parade that will be on Southern, I do have a lot of residents asking questions regarding the north side of Southern, what we're going to be doing there, what it's going to be allowed to be put there. Are we working with the LED WP regarding, you know, having access to that area during the street parade?
What was thought there? With our lease, we're not supposed to have parking there. If people wanted to put chairs or seat there, I think we'd have permission there, but are you thinking anything different from that?
No, I'm just wondering if they have that understanding that we would be able to do that, or is there an issue there that we've already looked through? The last thing I would want is be a week away from the event and then be told that there's no way that we can put chairs there.
Understood. We will double-check that and make sure we have that covered. We do have park use on a big portion of it, and we have passive use on the rest, which allows walking, and I'm pretty sure chairs will double-check.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to go ahead and kind of go over some of the events that I've been part of. As some of you may know, I'm also the president of the Selah Kiwanis, which is a regional group, a regional service group. Just recently, in the City of Bell Gardens, we held the Selah to Sinaloa Bike Ride. We have a resident of the City of Bell Gardens who's actually riding his bike from Bell Gardens all the way to Sinaloa. It's a little bit over 1,100-mile ride. He's doing this as a way to bring awareness to children's needs. We're raising funds through the Selah Kiwanis program to be able to provide a funding to the Kiwanis Children's Fund, and also Touch Points Church in Bell Gardens, who does a lot of food drives for the community there. So if you want more information, please visit Selah Kiwanis at our Instagram or Facebook, and also at our website at selahkiwanis.org. Also, this last weekend, I want to thank our Parks and Recs Director and your staff for the Bell Gardens Memorial, Eddie Cochran Memorial Car Show that was held at Ford Park. You allowed the City of Bell Gardens to utilize the stage that we have. It was a huge savings to the city, which was also a fundraiser for the Selah Kiwanis to actually start a scholarship fund at Key Club for the Bell Gardens High School. This is a programs that are going to impact a lot of kids in the region, and I'm very proud of the work that you guys did in partnership with them, and it went great. They had over 120 cars there. The event went off smoothly, good entertainment, and the stage was well-protected, and your staff did amazing while being there. So thank you very much for that. And as just a caveat, we were able to raise over $17,000 that day. That will be used specifically to help the children from Bell Gardens High School start their Key Club and also have annual scholarships. As, you know, if you join the Key Club and you meet your service hours, we'll be able to offer annual scholarships to them, and that's something that we're very proud that we're able to bring to that, to that region. You know, we're blessed here in South Gate. We have a great South Gate Kiwanis that is very active in our local schools. A lot of our regional cities, Bell Gardens, Cudahay, Maywood, they're small cities. They don't have the infrastructure or the capacity to be able to start a Kiwanis group or a service organization like this. So when Armando brought up the idea of doing a regional one to be able to help support the little smaller cities in our region and give them some support, I thought it was a great idea. We're only going to be successful here in South Gate as our region is. You know, I think we are the pearl of Selah, but if we want to make sure we make our region successful, we have to start taking some initiatives and providing some impact into the regions around us and the cities around us. So very happy about these two programs. And then lastly, you know, I've been working tirelessly also with the Selah Kiwanis board members on doing our first annual college and career fair for the Selah region. We're going to have 23 universities... We're going to have 23 universities and colleges at Southgate Park on October 15. We're going to have all the way from UCLA, Cal State LA, Cal State Dominguez Hills, Cal State Fullerton. We have some private schools, Loyola Marymount are going to be there. And it's going to be an opportunity for our regional students to come here from the universities, get inspired. I am a true believer that if we want to inspire our children, we got to show them what's possible, what we have available for them and what programs are out there. We're also going to have unions, labor, trade, people there. There are some students who don't want to go to college. They want to start working right out of high school or they want to figure out a trade. I want to be able to inspire them to figure out what trade is out there and what opportunities are out there. I also want to thank our local police department. It's going to be out there with their Explorer Program. Our city of Southgate HR will be out there with career opportunities and career paths and also bringing in, bringing some insight to what career paths we have in our city from entry level all the way up to a director position. There's opportunities that we have here. So very excited about this. And again, if you know any high schoolers in the region, please invite them. We'll have flyers. Our flyer is also on the selahkiwanis.org and also on our social media pages. Spread the word and I would like to make this a very successful event. If we want to continue to do events like this, we need to get the students there. The colleges will keep showing up if the students keep showing up. So we want to make sure we get the students there. So please, if you can, help me spread the word. Help get the students there and let's help inspire our region. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vios.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Josh, for all the activities sharing. Gracias, everybody for being here tonight. Appreciate you all, especially when there's a Dodger game going. You're here with us, sharing in space with us, discussing the community. Mostly you know I work for the college here. We have a college here that's housed here, you know. Right now it's, we're building a new building. But right now we're at the high school at Southgate. And I just want to invite you, tomorrow and Thursday, we have enrollment, open enrollment registrations for the coming months. So the next two days, if anybody wants to go back to school, wants to learn, meet with a counselor, we're going to be here at the high school the next two days from four to seven. So we'll have counselors there and everybody admissions, financial aid. So you're all welcome to come and join us again tomorrow and Thursday, four to seven here at Alpha Dearborn. The other thing I just want to mention is the parade, you know, I thought a few months we brought it, you know, I thought that we were going to maybe go down towards Hollidale. I know a lot of Hollidale people were here today. It would have been nice to do it over there. I mean, it's a beautiful street. It's large street. I think we need to do a little more, you know, love for Hollidale. Everything is around over here on Tweety, which, you know, I think we have to spread that love around. I mean, you know, I really think about it because I've been going over there and because of the freeway, because of the bridge, the river, it is separated. And so if you don't have no reason, you know, and it's a community, we need to spend a little more, more of our offices. I know they mentioned that today. But it is a part of our community and I think we, you know, it would be nice if in the future we think about it. Since we don't have a chamber over there, we don't have many activities over there, it would be nice if we start thinking about it a little bit more. I mean, you know, because, and they are part of the community. And so that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to all of you who are here today and bringing your concerns. And we see the, we see the, not the problem, but the needs for lights out there. And I'm sure that in the near future, we are going to be talking about that. Because right now the parks is dusk to dawn, which, which is, this has been going for, I mean, ever since the park was built. But there are times that we need to change those, especially because of the need of the families that they have that, they have the need to take their children to do something in their parks. And I think that, I mean, and that's what we want, you know, we want healthy kids and we want kids to be involved in recreation and keep them busy, keep them out of trouble. And I'm sure that our city manager and Steve are going to be talking about that in the next couple of days and not tomorrow, because I think this is a priority that we need to look into. Next week I'll be going to Liga, California City, so I'll be gone for three days. It's here in Long Beach, so I will not be staying in a hotel. I'll be driving back and forward. So I will be attending that conference, a three-day conference. And I just wanted to say that the car show, chief, everybody that worked on this car show, it was a very successful car show. So a lot of cars, a lot of beautiful cars, and it was really hard to choose which one got the trophies. So I mean, that was, and thank you for being this, the second year of doing the classic of car show. And hopefully it continues throughout, you know, throughout the years. Yesterday, I, we had the School Safety Collaborative Meeting with the School Safety Collaborative Meeting. It's a meeting that we've been having with all the principals here in the city of Southgate, just Southgate, with, together with the Police Department, Public Works. And we help the schools on any issue that has to do with the schools and the surroundings. So we meet every month and make sure that any concerns that they have around the schools that we, that we partner with them and that we, we give them, we give them the resources that they need. So, and like the chief mentioned, one of the things that they did want is more police participation. But I know that sometimes it's really, it's hard to get our offices there because it has to be okay by the district. So we're working on that and I know that our PD will be participating in our ribbon weeks on our schools. And I think that's, that's about it. That's what I have today. So thank you.
Okay, I'm up to bat. First of all, to everybody that came in, thank you for being here. I served as president of the Southgate Junior Athletic Association for over 30 years. And I know the challenges that everyone faces, right? Limited space, lights. There was a time where the park, the main park, the lights were not controlled locally. They were controlled outside. And the game is still going on and the lights go off. And, you know, it's dangerous when the pitch is being made and a batter's standing, then the lights go out. Who knows where that ball is going to go? So we understand that, but how we address it is by going to staff and telling them, hey, this is going on. Over the years, I established relationships with leadership of the organizations. Like I knew the president of the Southgate Aquatics. And they would tell me, hey, this is going on. Can you help out with this? And all of us are available, not just me. Don't want to make it seem like it's just coming to me. And we would address their concerns to the best of staff's ability. Southgate Youth Football, same thing. AYSO, I had a very good relationship with Rosenda when she was there and Enrique when he was there. And when they changed leadership, I told a couple of parents from Southgate, from AYSO, let the president, whoever that may be, to reach out to any one of us so that we can establish that relationship. I have no idea who your president is. No one's come to me. No one's come to any of us. So we don't know your concerns because no one's told us. Maybe you've shared them with staff, but, you know, they're going to do their best. But maybe we can give them a little bit more push if we know the concerns, but we can't guess at it. So I encourage you to go back and talk to your leadership and let them all know that we're available to listen. I, again, and not just me, I think all of us are available for that. But again, thank you for bringing that to our attention. The parade, yeah, there was a lot of discussion and I let the experts decide what would be best suitable. And yeah, Hollidale was discussed. And after looking at all the logistics and the very short time that we have, they made that decision that that would be the best course of action. So it's not like Hollidale was forgotten. In fact, work is being done over at one of the parks that's going to take one of the programs, the Halloween costume out of normal, you know, whatever activities they did. And Steve, maybe right now is a good time for you to mention what is going to happen for the Halloween event.
So at the request of council members, we did call the Paramount Unified School District and we are working with Hollidale Elementary School. They have a trunk or treat event that will be taking place on the 24th of October. The city is joining with them in providing candy and some bags and some other stuff and I think even a DJ of moving that. So we're going to dual promote that with the Paramount Unified School District over in Hollidale so that we do have an activity over there too.
Thank you. And I said that because I want to make sure that it doesn't sound that they're forgotten because they are not. We listen and we try to address the issues, but we have to know other concerns that you might have. So I want to clear that up. I attended the Independent Cities Finance Authority and I took a friend with me, Art Servantes. And the reason I did that is because it was an item on the agenda dealing with streetlights. Now, just to be clear, the streetlights belong to Southern California Edison. And when they go out, our staff will do everything that they can to bring them back on. But they're limited because they are not the lights that the city owns. And so we're putting pressures and the city manager and our public works director are constantly reaching out to them. If there was a way I can show you my phone and all the phone calls I've made to the contact people that represent Southgate in regards to Southern California Edison, you'll see just how much of an effort is being done to address a lot of the issues with Southern California Edison. In fact, at an upcoming meeting, we might have a visitor from Southern California Edison and I hope we're able to do that soon. But that is an ongoing issue. But again, the Independent Cities Finance Authority has some options that we might explore. And I know that our public works director will be meeting with them to try to address, not just on a temporary basis, but hopefully a permanent solution. There's no promises here. Those lights are 90 years old and they don't make parts for them anymore. And in talking to one of the representatives, the company that was making parts for them is going out of business. So I'm very concerned about that. And again, for any of you that are car buffs and you have an old car and you're looking for a part, they just don't make it anymore. You have to go out to a junkyard and try to find your parts. And that's what they're basically doing with Southern California Edison Lights. So again, I want to get that out of the way. There are some issues though that I do want to address. Some of them were brought up by residents tonight. And that is that when someone calls someone from staff, we need to do a better job of returning the phone calls. I went to visit an individual today in regards to an email I received yesterday concerning a street light that was knocked over by a drunk driver over at the Carmon area, 10500 block of Carmon. And that would happen four months ago. And I took a photo. The thing is still there. You can just see the base of where the light used to be. And the people that are concerned over the fact that they don't have light in the evening and the way it gets dark earlier. And again, we've got little children going to go out trick or treating and there's no light. I'm concerned about that. So again, I hope we do a better job of at least returning phone calls to people. I think that's an important thing. I also had a resident who reached out to me concerning the lack of attention that the sidewalks have on business, in business districts and more specifically on Tweety Mile. And I could tell you, there was a time where I would go there and I would see the business owner sweeping in front of their place and even, you know, with a water hose cleaning up. I don't see that as much anymore. Maybe we can reach out to the Tweety Mile people. And Ankela, you're going to be on the Tweety Mile Committee. Hopefully you can bring that up at some point. But again, these are issues. Let's see, who would that be? Rob, maybe you can take the lead on that, reaching out to the Tweety Mile folks and address the cleanliness of the street. And I know right now because of the construction, that's not what they were referring to. The other issue that was brought up regarding Tweety Mile and the cleanliness are the bus benches. They look like they have not been maintained. And I know there's a contract, right? We pay someone to go out there and clean. Who's that? Would that be our, the contract with the, with the company that does the cleaning of the bus benches? Is that correct?
Yeah, we do have Parkwood who does the cleaning of the bus benches as well as the rest of Tweety Mile and what have you.
Well, it turns out that the complaint I'm getting is that they're not being cleaned on Tweety. So we might want to review the contract and let them know that there's concerns about that.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that. They're going to be out there tomorrow. We did receive today's concern. So we're going to have them out there tomorrow to make sure they clean up the area. There's also a little bit of a crossover there in that we've got a project under construction that's under the, now the purview of the contractor. They own the site. And so there's what we can continue to do and then there's what we can't. So I'll make sure we line up those roles and responsibilities.
Okay. And again, I, you know, we're here to govern and not politic. And I want to make sure that this doesn't come across like a politic. But the city clerk stepped out. She's at a conference, I believe. Is that it? And last week, we did receive that letter that was read by Councilwoman Avalos. But the reason she didn't read it is that that was a special meeting that we have. And during special meetings, we don't have people who come in and speak on non-agendized items. They don't speak on, we don't read emails out and that was part of it. And I guess she anticipated this, so I was handed a letter to read. And I, after, I hope I don't have to read it, but okay. And it says, "Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you from afar. I want to respond to recent erroneous allegations against me, which are clearly politically motivated. I urge our residents to disregard these attempts to silence me during this election season. Such tactics seek to undermine my role as your elected city clerk." Was that a timer on me? Okay, okay. Let's see. "I take my responsibility seriously and I'm honored to serve our community with pride and integrity. As a resident myself, I have every right to engage in political process, including voting, supporting and endorsing candidates who I believe will effectively represent our city and its residents with much humility, honor and respect. I would also like to clarify that I do not handle vote counting. That responsibility has been managed by LA County for many years now. Those making these allegations misunderstand my role, but I can assure you that my commitment to a fair electoral process remains strong. I will not be deterred by these attempts to undermine my voice. Therefore, I have a simple yes or no question to our city attorney." It's not me, so don't get uptight there. "Mr. City Attorney, do I have the right during my own time to vote for, support and endorse any candidates without any fear of retribution? Please respond. Thank you." It's your choice of your answer tonight. Okay, so there you go. So I read the letter from the city clerk. But let me share with you that a couple of years ago, all of us here, including Councilwoman Avalos, we were encouraging that the city clerk position in Southgate no longer be an elected position. That that position become an appointed position. We tried, but people made an accusation that if it's appointed, it would be someone that's controlled by the council. But let me share this with you. The chief of police is appointed. All the directors here are appointed. But they're appointed- But they're appointed and hired by a city manager. And a city clerk in cities where they have appointed city clerks, they're also hired by the city manager. And those city clerks cannot engage in politics. They cannot. But in that, elected city clerks are allowed to do that. There's precedent here. I recall the previous city clerk, she actually paid for the, a mailer for myself and Mr. DeWes. She paid for the front page of a Penny Saver. And she had every right to do that. And so again, and by the way, the prior city clerk was Ms. Avalo's sister. It was okay then. And two years ago, she endorsed someone, supported someone. Four years ago, same thing. There's nothing really nefarious about it. But again, I understand the feeling. And again, that letter that was written or read was not her. She was just reading something that somebody read. So again, this is not an.
It was a letter that was sent by a resident.
Right, not her. I don't want.
Those are not my words.
Right, that's why I'm, I'm clearing that up. I don't want to make it seem like I'm accusing anybody. It was an anonymous letter, but I want to clear that up. There's no accusation at all from her coming to us, at least. I'm hoping that's not it. I believe that's not it. But a resident who wrote that, I want to make sure that that resident, whoever that person may be, knows that an elected city clerk has the right to do that. And the prior city clerk did that. And nobody objected to it. I didn't. Even when she didn't support me, it was okay. That was her right. That being said, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just have asked the city attorney for one clarification, if, just in this. There was a statement made that the letter was denied to be read. I just want there to be clarification that it could not have been read at the special meeting.
No, that's, that's correct. The, the letter was received just before the, on the day of the special city council meeting. And the Brown Act allows us not to take into account at those special meetings, comments that are not part of the agenda. At a regular city council meeting, we do allow, and state law allows, for people to talk about items that are not on the city council agenda.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarification.
Yeah, okay.
So then, just to clarify, it should have been read in tonight's meeting. I should not have read it, just to clarify.
Okay. All right, so we got consent calendars. You guys want a five or? What, we already did all that?
No. Calendar, consent calendar.
Yeah, what I'm saying, do you guys want to take a five before we do the consent? It's up to you guys. See, look, I'm a San Francisco Giants fan, so my season is over. So the Dodger fans want to continue with this. Okay, fine. I'm going to keep you guys here long anyway.
He's watching it.
You're watching it, okay.
What's the score?
No, stop. All right, here we go. Consent calendar, enough shenanigans. Here we go.
Consent calendar items, two, three, four and five.
Thank you. Okay. Any member of the audience wishing to speak on these items? Speak, come on forward. See, no one will close the audience portion. Do we have any emails?
None.
None at all. Okay, so here we go.
Motion to approve.
Two, three.
Two, three and four and five.
Two, three, four and five. No, you're too late.
We've had a motion in a second.
Roll call. Motion was made here, the second by Ms. Avalos.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Barron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios. Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
And Mayor Hurtado.
Okay, I'm recusing myself from item number two. The Urban Orchard is too close to where I live and by law, I have to recuse myself. But yes, on the others. Okay, let's move on to item number six.
Item number six, the city council will consider a ratifying the nomination by Councilmember Maria Del Pilar Avalos of Adolfo Varas to the Citizens Advisory Committee, B, ratifying the nomination by Councilmember Maria Del Pilar Avalos of Flavio Morales to the Tweety Mile Advisory Board, and C, ratifying the nomination by Vice Mayor Maria Davila to reappoint Angela Lucero to the Tweety Mile Advisory Board.
Okay. Pardon me, did you read item A or was it only item B?
Oh, A and B.
Yes.
A and B, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Open it to the.
Open it up to the.
Yeah, I'm about to do that, but I heard discussion going on. I didn't know what you guys were doing. All right, so let me open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to address us on item number six? See, no one. I'm going to close the audience portion. Any emails on this one?
None.
None at all.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And this, just for clarification, it's A, B and C?
B and C, yes.
Or B and C, not A?
A and C. The letters of the alphabet.
I just want to make sure because we're, we're missing letters every time we're.
Man, I'm losing control here, guys. Come on, A, B and C.
Motion in a second.
I'm sorry, who motioned?
I did.
Davila, second by Avalos. Roll call. Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Barron.
Yes, and welcome again, Angela. We serve together with the Parks and Recs. I'm happy you're back.
Okay. Councilmember Rios. Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
And Mayor Hurtado.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say that Commissioner Angela Lucero is here. So Angelita, do you want to say anything or you're good?
I just want to say to, I accept again the nomination. And I'm going to try to do best, you know, this year than last year. Thank you so much.
Oh, you did good.
You did great. Welcome aboard again.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Okay, moving on to item number seven.
Item number seven is the warrants. The city council will consider approving the warrant register for October 8th, 2024. Grand total, $2,290,684.50.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Take this time to open it up to any member here in the audience who had any questions regarding the warrant register. And for the members here, warrant register are bills that we pay on a, you know, timely basis. If you have any questions regarding the ones that we're paying for this review period, you can speak. Seeing none, I'll go ahead. Any emails?
None.
None? Bring it back to council. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
They're keeping it consistent is Davila and Avalos.
Hey, we're on a roll.
This woman's.
Roll call.
All night long.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Barron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios. Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
And Mayor Hurtado.
Yes. Okay, I will entertain a motion in a second. Good night, everyone. Go, go watch your, your ballgame.